All right, let's start this study session, April 5th, 2021. We're gonna do a roll call, myself and Sharon Bowser, and attendance Doug Stewart.
Present.
Beth Houston.
Here.
Janice Gonzalez.
Here.
Brian Williams.
Present.
Jeff Miles.
Present.
Ardell Steele.
Present.
Chief Stone Metz.
Here.
And John Simmons.
Here.
Chief Quantrill's got the night off, evidently there's a basketball game. Let's see. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Consent agenda. Any questions? All right. On to new business, item A, Resumee 2021-16, Construction on Merslin. Sharon?
All right, John pipe in if you want to add anything. The city went out to bid for the Merslin resurfacing project and we received bids in, I think it was last Tuesday. We got four bids and the low bidder, it was a great bid. They bid, I think they said like 25% lower than the cost than the engineer's estimate. So we're able to do both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of that project, or I should say Schedule 1 and 2. So we ended up in a lot better position financially because of that.
That is awesome, it's fun getting good news.
Yes.
Um, okay, item B, do you have any consulting agreement? Anything else to add on that, Sharon?
Just, this is the consulting agreement that goes along with it because the project, the bid came in lower. Some of the fees for the consultant needed to be reduced and that's what this is.
All right, item C, Ordinance 1520, Revising Regulations for Developer Fees. I sat in on this meeting with Jeff Miles and Doug Stewart and Ardell. Ardell, you want to give us the vote down on what we decided?
Uh, yes, uh, this was a meeting with the Public Works Committee. This was to do the mandatory review of the developer fee ordinance. Uh, it was decided that for 2022, 23, and 24, there would be an escalation in fees by one cent each year. The original ordinance that was in play basically stopped at 68 cents. As of 2022, it'll go up to 69, then 70, and then 71. The ordinance also does a modification that I found in the RCW, which was that originally it was written in that there would be six years for expenditure funds when by RCW standards, it's now allowed for 10. So that was put in as a modification. The other thing that was adjusted was a description or... Are you done Doug? Description to lay out the appeal rules a little bit better. The actual format for how to go about doing a developer fee appeal was very ambiguous before, so this kind of straightened it out.
Ardell?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions about it. One, it wasn't really clear, maybe I just wasn't understanding it, about, about the deferral process? And when it would be, how long the deferral process lasted? I mean, if they were granted a deferral, how long that what lasted? Can you help me with that?
Sure thing. The deferral process, let's start first off, it is just for single-family residential only. It cannot be applied to commercial or industrial. They can apply, it's mainly set aside for those developers that are doing like 20, 30, 50 homes. And they're doing 20 at a crack. This allows them to apply for that deferral and set things in motion where they, a lien would go on the property. It lasts basically until they apply for a final on, on the home. And then they have to come in and actually pay it. Normally, we do our collection of developer fees at the time that we issue the building permit. So if it takes them nine, 12, 16 months to get the property done, and then they call us for a final, then we would go through the process of doing the release on that.
Okay.
So Ardell, is that the certificate of occupancy? So this, that has to be paid to the point before you hand out the CO?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that, that, that wasn't clear to me. I don't know, it may have been in there and I just couldn't see it. So that's why I was kind of looking for that, but it wasn't clear. The other thing I wanted to ask you is, because at least commercial property, not all, I guess, but a lot of commercial property continues to generate revenue for the city. Residential, on the other hand, does not, and eventually kind of becomes a kind of a thing that we, you know, we have to maintain the infrastructure to maintain that, even though we're not really generating a profit from, you know, the development of residential. Residential costs us money. So I was kind of curious why the, the development rates were the same. Is that pretty common? Or, because it seems like maybe commercial might be, should be less? Or residential might, should be a little more? Was there any...
Well, and you would be... Yes, we did. Matter of fact, I believe Doug had mentioned possibly putting a one or in front of the numbers at one point. But we have traditionally only had the less than a dollar going right now, simply because we're basically a smaller community and one of the things that I get hammered on quite frequently when, when I have to assess this is no one else is doing this, but in fact, they are, they're just disguising it in different ways. So, so it, you know, and when you actually look at the, the funds that we are taking in, they are quite literally the small end of the scale for what we should be collecting or what we could be collecting, I should say. But again, it gets back to what does council feel comfortable with as far as a number? The Public Works Committee felt the 69, 70, and 71 cents made more, made adequate sense. It wasn't a drastic hike. So that's why the number moved forward.
How, how big is a hike? How, how big is the hike?
The, the difference on average of what we should be collecting versus what we are collecting, you know, we're at 68 cents right now and some communities, mostly on, on the west side, but some communities even here on the, on the east side of the state have been collecting anywhere from three, three and a half to five, six dollars a square foot.
Wow. So I'd be interested in hearing what everybody else's thoughts were on that, the folks on the committee. What was the, the, what were your reasoning for wanting to keep it so low?
Well, we, I'll speak, we just didn't want to blow anybody out of the water, but we knew it needed to go up some.
Oh, so how far did it go up? How far did it go up?
One cent.
One cent a year.
One cent?
A year, yep.
Hmm. Okay, well, like I said, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know what it should be, and I wasn't part of the conversation, but that doesn't seem like it would cover our infrastructure needs is my biggest concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't part of that meeting, although I don't know, I thought maybe Public Works Director should be in a Public Works thing, but whatever. I think that you guys are just right on keeping that low though, because of all the potential we have through Vintage Valley of trying to invite businesses in, you know, and to get this growth going. And we're gonna, and we'll be able to make it up on the back end when that stuff can come in. But we have to have something really enticing and that, to me, it sounds like that's very enticing.
So I kind of agree, I agree with you, John, on the commercial. I was questioning the residential, because like I said, that costs us money. It's not generating, it won't generate revenue.
That's understandable, but that, it's a very enticing thing to keep to promote business. People always ask...
Oh, I agree with you there, the business part I like, yeah.
I, yeah, all Janice is saying, she thinks there should be two categories, residential and commercial.
There are right now.
Is that something that other cities do, Ardell? Do they split it up like that?
We have three categories.
Go ahead, Janice.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, no, we have three categories right now, but we charge the same rate. And I think the, the commercial, I, I think the residential should be higher than the commercial.
Well, and a lot of times what happens on the commercial one is they, they'll waive the parks part of it because the commercial, the commercial aspect of it doesn't have any impact on parks, but it always does on police and fire.
And, and roads.
Yeah.
Fires, fire and roads, yes.
Yeah, usually parks is the only, yeah, parks is the only one that usually gets outed for any reason.
Well, when I, when I read it, it said that the, that it was specifically allotted to those categories by percentage. That doesn't happen?
Yes, it does.
Oh, okay.
So I think, I think the discussion regarding the parks being outed is, I'll bring up the Deaton, Deaton Ward's hay processing plant over at the corner of Buena Toppenish Road and Yakima Valley Highway. They have a portion of property that is actually in the city limits and we had to process building permits for, for their hay sheds. Now, they have no access to city roads and they have no access to city parks, but they do have an impact on fires. So the only one that they had to pay was the developer fee for the fire.
Okay.
To answer your other question regarding the different categories and if they have different payments, a lot of different communities will actually charge residential higher.
Yeah.
You know, because of the, the issues surrounding their impact on, on the community as a whole, from fire to parks to, to the roads. But not by very much. There's usually maybe a 25% differential between costs.
I'd be okay with that.
Well, I think, Janice, you've got to convince the guys on that committee, I mean, that's what they decided, you know, I, nobody likes being...
That's why I want to hear from them, why did they decide on that? Like that, because I heard from Ardell that Doug was thinking that they should...
A flat dollar a square foot was fine with me. I had no problem with it.
Uh huh.
But we needed to raise it something, just because we can't keep going this low rate.
Yeah. So how about, how about you, Jeff?
Well, if you guys want to raise it to a dollar, I don't have a problem with it. I just, you know, I know it's been, it started out low and we, you know, raised it like a penny here and a penny there, but I just hope you don't get too much blowback on it, but we can try it.
I'm just talking about residential. I'm not talking about commercial or industrial.
Well, any, any contractor or builder is gonna lose their mind, especially if they know what the old rate was. Yeah.
Okay, so do you guys, do you guys want to scratch this, this ordinance from this meeting and we can revisit this? Janice, do you want to join this committee?
I'm, I'm okay with scrapping it, I'm okay with it going through. I'm not, I mean, I'm not, it's not something I'm feeling passionate about, I'm just trying to understand why we want to do this. And I, and the people on the committee are not really convincing me that they're even on the side of it. So that's why I'm having a problem.
I can sense that. So I, I think, I think what, how they're feeling was they just, you know, nobody likes big tax increases, you know? And, and they're being friendly to the, the people building houses here, and that makes sense, you know? We want, we want development, we want new houses going in, so. But if you guys would like to revisit it and it does make sense, residential does put more of a strain on the infrastructure, but I absolutely would not want to raise the commercial.
Yeah.
Oh, we can.
I, I wanted to, I would, the only thing I was looking at was the residential, not commercial. We want to be, yeah.
Well, I think that we can probably decide this year. I mean, is everybody feeling, is everyone feeling a dollar equitable for, I mean, what do you think, Ardell? You're the one that's gonna get people spitting at you when they hear about this.
Yeah, there's gonna be blowback no matter what, but if council feels comfortable moving from 68 cents to a dollar on the residential side, and then starting at a dollar, going to a dollar and a penny, and then a dollar and two cents in the consecutive years, that's perfectly fine. I can, or we can just try to keep it at a 25% differential between commercial and residential.
So the, I was kind of more interested in the 25%, if that's be what, pretty much what folks are, are doing now. Having it, so that would only take it up about, not quite 17 cents, I think, if I'm doing this in my head.
Yeah, 17 cents, so that's...
Which would be, what would that be?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
So 85 cents, it would be, I think that one might be a reasonable thing and it's defensible and it's typical practices in neighboring communities, I think. I mean, it, it's a, it's a position that I think would be easier to defend than...
Okay, so we did, we, we go, we add the 25% surcharge on the residential, but we still go with the penny increase over the three-year period?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead and scratch this for today then, and we can just bring it back in two weeks, that sound good?
That's fine.
Are you, Doug, Jeff, are you guys, Jeff?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine by me, yeah.
Okay. Do any other council members have any opinions?
The more due diligence we take before we come up with a final decision, the better product we'll have and the better we'll be able to deal with any issues that might arise too, so. I like using comps to kind of base our, our stuff, but yeah, obviously we've got to change them.
Okay, Ardell, maybe you could get us some comps to look at, like, I'd be kind of curious, I was just seeing some of, like, especially like our neighbor, like, like saying like what Seela does, something that's comparable to Zillow.
Okay.
Good, awesome. Do we have any committee reports? Janice, you got anything? No?
Uh, uh, no, I, I think at the last, I attended the home board in between our meeting, the home board meeting, and I had spoken to you at the last meeting that YVCOG had put in a kind of a bid to be the, operate that program. And, you know, I think YVCOG is really great at planning and that, those kinds of things, but operating social service programs with this is kind of part of that. I just felt like that wasn't something that I was wanting to support for them doing it, that. And it was kind of dividing the other homeless type housing programs apart from it. So that, as it ended up, that did not happen. And so Yakima County is, did hire someone to manage the home program, and I'll start working with them as soon as they're, they're on board, but I hate to admit it, I forgot their name. But anyway, that's all I have.
Was there someone by the name of Brian?
Yes, yes.
Any, anybody, anything else? All right, on a mayor's report. I gotta say, this is a fun one. So remember last year when Ardell and I did that presentation for the splash park? And we felt outclassed by the people with their fancy graphics and at the dawn of the new age. And we just had the PowerPoint presentation. Well, when I left on Friday to head to San La Sack, I got a text from Sharon and Ardell, and the feds funded us $255,000. So we're in, we're getting, so we have the, the makings for the answer to our goal and the splash park is going to become a reality. Now, we are gonna have to match those funds. What we use of those funds will have to match with city monies, but this is a...
I'm sorry, can we use the stimulus funds or whatever that they are?
I don't believe so, not for this, but we still, nobody really knows how to spend the American Recovery Plan money yet. I know the paper said that the city of Yakima was gonna buy a fire truck and cop cars, but I'm talking with the mayor of Yakima, she said she doesn't know even where that came from. And nobody still knows yet how that money has to be spent.
Okay, I, just in terms of what I'm, how I'm interpreting the, the ruling, it is intended to kind of fill in for revenue that the cities may have lost. And I know we didn't really lose any, so that's why I'm thinking it's pretty much, we can do whatever we want with it, but...
Well, we...
But I, I, I mean, I want us to be really, push the envelope on that. I mean, as much as we can, not, not just go out and do it without making sure it's okay, but I'm hoping that we really do push the envelope on that, maybe, because I was thinking, also John had mentioned some, some needs with infrastructure too. And again, had our revenue been higher, I mean, we can make the case that had our revenue been higher during that period of time, but, but for COVID, it was not, so we can't, so we could use it to help for maybe offset some of those costs. So I think we can be really, I think we have a lot of leeway with it, but I'll be quiet.
No, you're, you're fine, Janice, and I understand what you're, what you're saying. We just want to make sure that we're doing it right, you know? I don't want to get us to where we spend this, we have to pay it back or something, we, you know? Going over our funds that we have right now, it's possible that we're real close to the city being able to fund the splash park where we're at. We, I mean, we put a moratorium on park spending for, since I've been in office, and so there's $40,000 right there. We, Ardell had an idea about, because part of that project has to redo the parking on that road that's going down to the sewer treatment plant. So she thinks there's a chance that we could use some of the road funds to pay for part of it. So that was like smart thinking, Ardell, on that one. So we'll still, we'll see, and the American Recovery Plan, let's just wait, we have like years to spend that money.
Okay.
So it's, and you could, we're only getting half and half, so only half of the $680,000 would even be allocated to the city for this year, and the rest would be for next year, but nobody really knows how to spend it. And yes, reading into it, some of, Janice, it sounds like you can spend it, not even for the lost revenue stuff, but to benefit COVID-related activities, which is gonna bring me to my next point. Sharon, can you bring up the map of Stewart Park, please?
Can you see that?
There we go, right there. So right now, we're working on putting in for a grant for, it's actually ARP to, they fund grants for senior health and fitness. And so we're working with Zillow Physical Therapy and who's helping us to be our physical therapist input guy. And what our plan is, is to build a walking path that will follow the contour on the edge of the park. And at certain segments along there, I think where you can see the blue, there would be little exercise activities for, you know, physical fitness, like one's a stairs, one's a stationary bike, one's like some uneven bars. And we also thought about possibly adding a drinking fountain to the end of the cook shack. So, but we're thinking that this is outdoor activity. You know, nothing says COVID awareness like trying to keep people outside and stay healthy. So we're wondering, because this grant through ARP isn't very big, but if we could use some of that money from the American Recovery Plan to offset some of the costs, that's our plan. Ardell, you want to add anything about that?
No, not really, I think you've covered most of it, other than the security cam.
Oh, yeah, so that, so we're still having some problems with the camera picking up license plates at the bins. So we talked about part of this project adding a new pot station there in the corner, kind of where the cursor is, and putting a new camera there that can watch the park and also watch the, watch the bins. What else I was gonna say, oh yeah, I did the math on it, so that red line is, it goes around, the park there is 1,800 feet. So that turns out to be .34 of a mile, so it's almost exactly a third of a mile. So we get out a little sign up there, so for people that want to walk here in town, you know, they could do three times around that, that would be exactly one mile.
What were you thinking about making it out of, Scott?
Asphalt.
I, I guess our hope would be to, and this plan doesn't reflect it because it's just a rough plan, but you know, as the path goes around, we were hoping that, you know, where the equipment is, it would go like between the path and the edge of the park instead of the inner park. And that way too, like times when the carnival comes in down here, you know, have this whole open area without having to deal with going around equipment and whatnot. We sat down today and looked at the different equipment with a guy from PT next door. He really liked the equipment that we had, we had picked out. It was mostly in the beginning gained or thought of for senior citizens. And then we did add a couple of pieces that would be okay, you know, for the younger generation as well, maybe in a little better shape. So, yeah, it's exciting, I think it would be really nice if we could get it funded.
So that's, I mean, that's really the point of this, so like, you know, council should be pretty excited about this. I know that we are, and big thanks goes to Ardell for putting us into this kind of stuff, because this is stuff that our little town couldn't fund, you know? I mean, remember how upset people were when we had to shut down the pool? And now we have an answer to like our, our pool problem. And I think people are gonna be absolutely thrilled with our splash park.
I think so too, I think so too. Kudos to everybody that contributed to this. I just, I, I agree with you totally, Scott, this is gonna be a really good addition to our community.
Yeah, yeah, you couldn't have said it any better, Janice. All right, well, we can do some quick staff reports. John, you want to give any updates?
Lots going on.
Have, have there been any irrigation breaks?
Oh, never, never.
Your nose is growing.
Yeah, totally. Um, we did pass our water test down at Vintage Valley, so Village Valley is complete, one hundred percent on our water. Um, sewer got finished up for this phase, so they'll be getting some subgrade going next week, and asphalt will start rolling, or Kirby Better will start rolling in here really soon down, down there. Um, Third Avenue, we had a little snag today, um, but it's coming along. And we're excited, Merslin, we signed that up, and that'll start in, I think, three weeks, or in, in the April. So.
Got anything, Dan?
Lots of stuff.
So John, Vintage Va- Valley, uh, when are they gonna, are they working on that? Start completing that to go all the way into Zilla Lakes or what?
No, no, it, it, that's gonna be up to the developer himself. It's just gonna stay straight. Kind of where you're walking, where you've probably been walking, and it'll go right around the barn and just go all the way to Buena, so.
It will go to Buena?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Well, that's okay too. I just was wondering, are they working on that now or?
They're working on it, and it'll start paving it, like I said, within the next, for a while. Yep, really going on now, moving along.
Paul, you got anything?
No, fire's doing good.
Ardell, you want to add anything?
Uh, yes, I wanted to let everybody know that I received a notification from Yakima County that the twenty-nine acres out or off of Rosa Drive is, I guess, finally going into a short plot. Uh, one of the things that is called out on their plating though is that they wish to hook into city water and sewer. Um, I believe I've mentioned this a few times on and off for the last maybe year, year and a half, but apparently they figured out a way to actually move the project forward. And so I was going to send out a comment letter regarding what their requirements are gonna need to be, and then also request that they have a note, I guess, on the face of the plat, so that Yakima County will actually look for proof that water and sewer have been paid for. The overall project is slated for, I believe, a total of sixty-five homes out there. Anyway, so that's what's going on, uh, on the county side, uh, and then.
Ardell, how far away is it from our existing, um, water and sewer lines?
I believe I calced it out at about fifteen hundred feet or so.
Okay.
I know that the, they're at the intersection of Cutler and, and Fifth and Rosa. Um, the alignment that the developer is proposing is unknown at this time, so just assuming that they go straight up to where their driveway or private road would start. You know, that's give or take about fifteen hundred feet.
So we would entertain, I know we've talked about this before, and you know how I feel about it. Is that sixty-five homes on our water and sewer systems that are not in the city limits? Is that what we're talking about?
That is correct.
We know, like, I know, like, I don't like it.
They could be paying outside user rates, which are higher than those that are in the city limits.
Yeah, been there, done that, been there, done that, just doesn't work out well.
Unfortunately, annex them, we would have to take the road to do it.
That, you'd have to take Rosa?
Yep. We cannot annex an island, we can't create an island, so the only way that we could create a physical connection to our current city limits is if we take the road.
How much more a month do they pay for wa- for, uh, water and sewer than, than city limits?
Ten bucks or something, it's nothing.
That would be a Sharon question.
That, that is nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I can't tell you right off the top, I'd have to look at it, it's not significant.
No.
It should be.
Yeah, so let's talk about that for a second. So, so Ardell, they, they want to hook up to our services because the county doesn't want them drilling sixty-five wells out there probably, right?
Well, they wouldn't be able to, I don't think, cover the sixty-five, but yeah, that's the gist of it, is they don't want them doing one giant communal well and one giant communal septic, or individual septic systems, uh, which is what they would have to do if the county even bothered to, to let them.
Is there language in our comp plan that says if someone is in our UGA that the city, um, needs to be notified about that, so that we have a chance to request that they are on city water and sewer, Ardell?
Uh, nothing directly in our comp plan, but the, uh, we did sign an agreement with, an inter-local agreement with, with, uh, Yakima County before we even went through our comp plan process that outlined how development standards within our urban growth area would, uh, be laid out. They ultimately, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, but the idea in that and with the growth management was that, you know, we want to restrict areas of growth that are urban in nature to within the city limits of the growth. Our growth areas are just to, just a way of identifying how the city plans to grow. We don't plan to let the county have those kinds of developments that are urban and in nature in a, in a rural area. Uh, so, I mean, to me, it just seems like a conflict of the idea behind growth management is the idea is that we don't want a bunch of little, uh, island, little, um, developments that are outside of city limits, that are, that are urban in nature.
When Ardell, we were talking about this today, and I, I did ask her to bring it up tonight, because I knew that we probably needed to talk about it, because, you know, it is a little different. If someone is close to our city limits, it may, it does make a lot of sense to have them, you know, either say, you know, commit to annex, or you know, they will in the near future or whatever. When it's this far, it does tend to raise questions, especially, you know, with a larger development like that. So I'm, I'm really glad that we're having the discussion.
A question, how many people right now are connected to the system that are not within city limits? I mean, roughly, I don't need the exact numbers.
You know, since we annexed Altigian, there's a lot less. I'm just trying to think, it's, it's not a ton of people.
No.
You have the hallucic home or farmer home. Uh, I don't know if Van de Graff is on or not.
No, he's not.
You have all of those people, uh, out off of the e- east side, so like where Mike Farmer lives.
So, because I hear, I hear John Simmons saying, our, our, um, fearless leader in public work telling us that we're, we're having issues, we need to, we need to develop our infrastructure, and then the county can just randomly say, we, we're gonna approve a development, and we want you to hook up to your system that needs to be developed more? I mean, John, what, what? What do you say?
Well, it's definitely something that we're gonna have to look at, because we already, Ardell and I looked at and had to, talked with our engineers when we were there projecting, um, that other smaller plot out there off of Rosa. And doing that, we were gonna have to upsize some of our piping at that phase. Um, now, if this comes into play, it's definitely gonna have to be looked at a lot more. Um, because what are we gonna have to upsize? Because say if you have that sixty-five plus, uh, Russ Redfield's, uh, area, plus if the other guy that, um, whatever his name is, Ardell, they're just off of. And Barry, when he does his development, now with a combination of all of those, now what are we looking at? What we have is a ten-inch, ten-inch sewer main coming down Keller, is that gonna be enough? Um, that's not an answer I can, I can say. Not be said, who's gonna pay for that?
Yeah.
And it doesn't just end there. You have a ten-inch there, and it goes into a twelve-inch on, on, uh, uh, Shane, but then it pops back down to an eight-inch again, so, um, anyhow, something that, yeah, we'll probably have to look at.
So, so to me, so I, I'm glad that you said that, John, and I'm, but to me too, you know, uh, we're, we're, you know, if we're gonna allow development outside of our, um, outside of our city limits, and we're gonna allow them to connect, we really are gonna have to revisit what they have to pay. I mean, if there's no significant difference in the amount that they have to pay, what is the, what's the, uh, what's the motivation? You know?
One of the, one of, one of the motivations is that they have to supply new infrastructure up to our infrastructure. So it will be having brand-new infrastructure coming to that point, but our problem is our current infrastructure of where it does connect on, if they can handle it. But we aren't, that's not any money out of our pocket for that eighteen hundred feet of infrastructure going down, uh, uh, Rosa, for instance.
Plus anything internal within the development.
Yeah, that's all on them. And then we receive, we receive the three thousand or whatever it is per water hookup and how much other bridge to the sewer hookup. You just don't have developer fees.
Those are all very good points brought up, and I'm glad everybody's brains just spin a little bit on this, because I'm with you, Janice. If there's no like significant, like the risk for reward here, it, like, is that really something we want to take on? So, and I don't know if we, if we raise those fees, you know, how much we raise them, and that's why I wanted to know how many people, you know, existing customers, you know, would be kind of shocked by this, because I would assume that would, that we'd have to raise that price for everybody, of course. So, um, but yeah, that's good things to think about. Sixty-five houses is no joke, that's a lot of houses.
Well, uh, a few of those customers are not even actually in our urban growth area, so that's something to consider as well.
Okay. We should come up, I, Sharon, we can come up with a list of, of how, we can figure that out, how many people are, were serving outside of our city limits, right?
Well, at the report, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. Okay, we'll talk about this next, uh, in a couple of weeks. Uh, anybody, Sharon, you want to add anything?
Um, no, uh, go ahead.
You know, I will add one more thing. Uh, we met today with the department heads and went over our, uh, Fourth of July stuff, because, you know, this is our first year that you gotta have a permit, and it's gonna be a difficult year. There's gonna be a lot of people that are not happy probably about having to get permits, but you guys all remember all this work we went through to try to get this down, and we were coming up with a game plan. We're actually gonna send out, uh, just a little newsletter, uh, in the next couple of weeks, uh, letting them know about some of the stuff that's going on, and reminding them of the regulations when it comes to fireworks, about getting their permit and all that stuff, so. Uh, with that, let's move on to this city council meeting, April fifth, twenty twenty-one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all. All right, myself and Sharon Ballance are in attendance. Doug Stewart.
President.
Beth Usted.
Here.
Janice Gonzalez.
Here.
Ryan Williams.
What's up?
Jeff Miles.
Present.
Ardell Steele.
Here.
G Stone Metz.
Here.
And John Simmons.
Uh, hello.
All right, consent agenda.
Mayor Carmack, I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda, items five, A through E as presented.
Second.
That motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 On to business, item A, resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen.
Mayor Carmack, in the city council approval resolution number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, awarding a construction contract for the Merklan area resurfacing project, Central Washington Asphalt Incorporated.
Second.
That motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 On to item B, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen.
I move the city council approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, approving the TIB consultant agreement and the updated cost estimate for the Merslin area resurfing pro- resurfacing project.
I second.
That motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, well, I think that concludes our meeting for today. Um, once again, Splash Park, yay.
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 Dude, seriously, I mean, how often does a quarter million dollars just fall out of the sky and then right in your lap? I mean, we gotta, yeah, this, I mean, that's a lot of times in the dunk tank, I can tell you that much.
The, uh, one, one other thing, if, if we sell the Pond Park property down on Vintage Valley, that money will go back into the park fund, correct?
You, you're darn right it can, and, but, uh, you know, we may want to hold on to that as long as we can, because the longer we hold on to it, the more it's gonna be worth.
Oh, I, I agree.
Yeah, so if we can get around, uh, funding this thing without selling that, I think that would be, uh, in the best interest of the city.
There's still a lot of vac- there's still a lot of vacant land out there, it's been for there forever.
Yeah, so, but that, I can see a, a brewery wanting to go in, especially with that pop, uh, research station going across the street, so.
Well.
That mine will sell and will be valuable. Uh, it looks like we have plenty of dirt on it at this point, too. John, are they gonna stop putting dirt on it? We need to flatten out and call it a victory, right?
Yeah, well, there's that whole section that's on this, what would that be considered? The southeast section? Um, that's really gotta get dug back out, and then a lot of that dirt's gonna go back in there, because they put grindings in there, and they were to haul them off, and their worker smashed them into the ground, and that's not gonna work, so.
Oh, okay, but granite's gonna take care of that.
Yeah, granite's gonna take care of that.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, I don't even like basketball, but I think I'm gonna watch the game. Anybody else gonna watch the game?
Same on both points.
No.
No? Does anybody else have anything to add?
Uh, got a water leak on First Avenue, First Street and Fourth Street right now, so that's where I'm gonna head to, so.
All right, well, good luck, John.
Later, I'm out.
Yeah. All right, well, with that, I'll see you, uh, boys and girls in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.